I'm going to call the meeting to order. Laurlee, would you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessam.
Here.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Here.
All right, thank you. We just had returned from our executive session. We were done about five and had dinner with the Berthitt Town Council, but we didn't take any action in it. It was just for conversation we needed to make. Stu, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. By the way, folks, the flag is up there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Dawn, please read the mission statement.
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. For the adoption of the agenda, April 20th, 2022, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed. So moved. Okay. Second. So that was Dawn and Amy, correct? All right. Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for April 6th, 2022. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for April 6th, 2022. So moved.
Second.
That was Alexandra and Stu. So Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
All right. Public participation timing, we always begin that with Dr. Schaefer.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the Board of Education. Tonight, as you know, we are in the beautiful town of Berthitt, and we want to certainly thank the staff of Berthitt High School for accommodating our meeting this evening. And immediately, right before this meeting, we had an opportunity to eat dinner with a number of Town of Berthitt officials, trustees, the town manager. And this is, it's just a really great opportunity for our Board of Education and their, the town leaders, government, just to sit down and talk about areas of mutual interest, you know, and just create relationships. I know there was recently an election here, and so there's two members on the town board right now. And so just a great opportunity to meet with them. And as a reminder to our community, we have two of our board meetings here in Berthitt. So we meet every year in October and then again in April. So again, we thank Berthitt for welcoming us. This morning, I held my final high school student advisory meeting of the school year, and I know many of you were there. This group was formed to leverage student voice as well as garner feedback around the work we are doing here in the Thompson School District. Students had opportunities to select topics of interest, and leadership also brought items of priority to this group in order to receive student perspective and input. This morning, we were joined by all of our high school principals, which was cool, as well as, again, members of this Board of Education. We will have a similar final meeting in May with elementary and middle school students as well. So we want to make sure that we're leveraging voice from across the district. Yesterday, Barb Cruz and I attended a regional meeting in downtown Denver of the Business Roundtable Group. Where superintendents and Board of Education presidents from across the metro area met with industry-leading business executives to discuss ways our entities can partner as well as provide opportunities to prepare our students for future workforce engagement. Special attention was paid around how the K-12 education sector can continue to take the lead to prepare our students to be successful by teaching them the necessary skills, attributes, and dispositions to be competitive and employable in the local and global marketplace. Conversation was the first, and hopefully a series, of more and ongoing conversations. So it was really powerful, and we really enjoyed it. Now, it is my pleasure, and I'm going to ask Andy Little to join us at the podium, and as he makes his way up here. Andy is our new Assistant Principal AD at Loveland High School. A little bit about Mr. Little. He started his career in education in 2004 after receiving a BA in Communications from the University of Arkansas. And he has a master's in secondary education from Adams State College in Alamosa. He has principal certification from Lamar University in Lamar, Texas. His first teaching job was at Harrison High School in Colorado Springs, where he taught honors, world history, U.S. history, and geography. In 2007, Andy went to Castleview High School in Castle Rock, where he designed curricula for all AP Human Geography and World History courses, and also developed AP preparatory workshops for those classes. In 2010, Andy landed at Discovery Canyon Campus in Colorado Springs, first as a humanities teacher, and in 2017 as the IB International Baccalaureate Coordinator, and then Assistant Principal in 2021. Andy has been both an assistant coach and head coach for Boys and Girls Soccer, as well as an assistant football coach. During his time as a coach, he increased athletic participation. Andy's experience in the classroom and on the field is the perfect combination for the Loveland High School Assistant Principal Athletic Director position. Thompson School District is really excited to have you, so welcome aboard, and congratulations. We're going to put you on the spot, but again, welcome.
Thank you, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
First of all, I just got out of a two-hour drive from Colorado Springs and just got here, but I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be up here this evening. On behalf of my beautiful wife, Angie, and my four children in the back, we are honored, we are humbled, we are excited to be able to have this opportunity. And I promise to give you all, give you all my all, and give you my very, very best. I promise to represent our school district, our community, our school in the highest light. And I just wanted to thank you all again for this opportunity. I will not let you all down, and as always, go Loveland.
Welcome aboard, congratulations. So finally, it's one of my favorite portions of the board meeting, although all portions are fun. This one is a little more fun. It is time to introduce our featured school. So each board meeting, we have an opportunity to showcase and feature one of our schools. And tonight, it's Berthitt Elementary School. So I'm going to invite Melanie Patterson, principal, to come forward, and it looks like Melanie has brought some honored guests with her.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer. It is my pleasure to highlight student work focused on problem-based learning this evening. So I'll give you a little bit of background, and then I'm going to turn it over to a really amazing group of young people. So this started with an opportunity from the Thompson School District for myself and two of our teachers to attend Northern Colorado in Ed... Ignite Ed, I'm sorry, in August. And we came back inspired to just bring back ideas to spark some innovation in our school and in our classrooms. And so as we came back, Ms. Kyle, who's here tonight, and Mrs. Knutson collaborated together, wrote a proposal to the Berthitt Schools Fund for some robots and a green screen for video production. And I had a meeting with Chris Kirk at the Town of Berthitt to do some brainstorming about some possible partnership ideas. One of his ideas was the work that they were doing in designing an inclusive playground in Berthitt. And that was something that I was especially excited about because we have an intensive learning center onsite at Berthitt Elementary School. And so Ms. Kyle also jumped on board and thought that that would be an opportunity for some really meaningful learning with our students. And so the day that she introduced that, I had the privilege of doing lunch duty with the fifth-grade class. And her class was so excited. They spent the entire lunch talking about concepts like engineering and design and mathematics the whole entire time they were in there today. And I feel like that excitement hasn't worn off having just talked with them today before they came. So it's really very exciting. Mr. Kirk came to the classroom to talk with them about constraints in their design thinking process so that they could refine their designs. And then they worked with research, they wrote summaries, they did visual models, and then in the end, it culminated into presenting to town representatives and getting some feedback on that. And I think one of the most exciting parts about this authentic, real-world learning was to see groups of students take that learning and extend it and be self-motivated and take that initiative to do some extensions. And one of those extensions, they'll share with you tonight in the form of a 3D model. And so at this point, it is my sincere pleasure to introduce four amazing human beings that are leaders and representatives of Berthitt Elementary. So I'd like to introduce you at this time to Kyran Gassia, Blake Slosson, Henry Hiltner, and Harvey Wallace. If you would please come to the front.
Hello, we are grateful for the privilege to inform you about the production of the Universal All-Inclusive Park being built in Berthitt. That we are contributing, we would like to share our presentation to educate you about our ideas that are supported by data.
This prototype is based off of Disney and nature theme, and we wanted it to make, wanted it to make so everyone can use it and enjoy it. We are considering many disabilities and data of these interviews we have done in the production of this design. We all wanted to add a shallow waterway because of all the suggestions in our class. Also, a parent told us that her daughter loves to play in water but doesn't often get to because of the drowning hazard.
Piniklarsivik, I believe. Many of the teachers, parents, ner... Many of the teachers, nurses, and parents with children who have disabilities have mentioned that the equipment that the kids have liked and looked at the most at playgrounds are swings, slides, and spinning equipment. They enjoy these movements because they don't commonly get to experience the movements if they are unable to walk. In some research, a student in our class found we learned that... We learned that our internal senses are called vestibular and pre-perceptual. Swings, spinning, and sliding can also advance these senses. This data helps us understand that we need to critique our typical equipment so that everybody can use and enjoy it. For example, slides based entirely off of conveyor belts so that children who use a wheelchair don't have to get out of it when using the slide. Additionally, we adjusted the zip line seats in our design so that the children in our wheelchairs can be safer when riding.
Some of our ideas for the park are slides. Which one of them will have a conveyor belt to hook a wheelchair to the slide? Also, the swings we put in are able to swing a wheelchair. And we have swings for people that aren't in a wheelchair. Then we have a zip line that the seat flips over so a wheelchair could go on the zip line. And if we flip that seat back over, a person who isn't in a wheelchair could ride on it, too. We put in benches for people who are tired from the playground or watching their kids. Finally, we put in a seesaw that has two seats on both sides, and those two seats are able to fit a wheelchair. This concludes our presentation about the Universal All-Inclusive Park, and we hope you enjoy it. Thank you for participating in our presentation.
As you can see, they put a lot of hard work into this project. I am Ms. Kyle, their homeroom teacher, and along with Kim Knutson, I attended the Ignited Conference back in the fall. And after that, taking design thinking for problem-based learning back to the classroom, we started in-class with ideas of what kind of problem we faced there. And the students chose SOAR cards, which they get rewarded with for good behaviors. And their issue was that putting them in a bucket and drawing at the end of the week didn't give them any kind of... They weren't able to have control over whether or not they got a prize at the end of the week. So we took to design thinking, and it resulted in our classroom SOAR store, hence the shirts that were made by a friend of mine, and she donated, and they were able to buy those in our classroom store. And they now operate that store all on their own. So we started at a classroom level and applied a lot of reading skills and mathematical skills in calculating money and running the SOAR store. And then we took to this more community level involving our town administrator and a park that will actually come to fruition in this town that they'll get to see for years to come. So as we did the research, the biggest part of this process is called Empathize, which is getting to know your problem and the people that face your problem. And there was a quote in there that said, "For every problem, you want to spend 55 minutes of the hour getting to know it and five minutes solving it." So we spent endless amount of time interviewing students with disabilities, teachers that work with those students, parents of those students. A student of mine went home and even made a connection with a person who works for a playground equipment company and builds these inclusive parks, and we interviewed her. So the engagement level is just catastrophic. These issues are real to them, and that keeps them engaged. And we can do this work with standards with such high engagement. They were... Students were analyzing complex text and learning new vocabulary, as you heard. They were deciphering research for credibility, fact-checking through multiple sources, measuring area and increasing spatial perception, and discussing budget and cost of equipment as they helped design this park. And we are assured by our town administrator that their ideas would be seen in the park that comes from this. So you guys did a wonderful job, and I hope we see more of this kind of learning in our classrooms.
Great, nice. Thank you very much. What an excellent task to work on and to celebrate for all those kids that will be coming to the park to play. So thank you. Very worthwhile. We appreciate it. Anybody have questions for them?
I was just going to say, are you guys aware that there are, I think, only two such parks like this in Northern Colorado? So the work you're doing towards this park is huge and will be very much needed and awesome, so good job.
Yeah, great. Alrighty, it's time for our board and committee reports. And this time, instead of having everybody just give kind of a laundry list of everything they've done all month long, because we all do a jillion things every month or every week. So I asked them to really key in on one or possibly two of their committees so that they could really kind of unpack that committee for you. So we will start down here with Amy, and we'll just kind of... I'll do mine last.
Okay. I'm on the Professional, the PCC Professional Concerns Committee. What we focused on was, this month was wrapping up a PLC survey just as far as the logistics and how is that going to get distributed? We've been working on that for a while. And then we also focused on some shared decision-making. We did a really good activity about what does that look like individually? And then we brought that to the bigger group. I'm also on the Talk Committee, Technology Advisory and Leadership Committee. They focus on long-term issues and policies and changes in the TSD business and instructional and network technology. We just met today. We discussed in a real collaborative way the school technology plan. It was last done in 2019, and then we had COVID. So that changed, you know, just looking at the school's plans through the lens of COVID and how to, you know, what we've learned from that. And, oh, there'll also be a survey for the annual technology use survey going out to staff and students. Thank you.
Dawn?
So I'll speak about CAC. We are trying to get our information together to do celebrations and recommendations to the board. And we loved the DAC format that we saw, and we thought, that's something we could do. And as we were compiling the information that we have to look at, our Special Education Advisory Committee has over 150 items that are either a celebration or a recommendation. A lot of work has been done in the two years that we looked at because we really were standing this committee up. So there was a lot of things to put into place to figure out how do we work and what works best for making sure that we really are an advisory that represents across the district for the families that have students with special education needs. So there's a lot going on. There'll be obviously a pretty broad presentation, but we're trying to narrow down that 150 to the really important stuff. So lots of work continues, and it's an incredibly dedicated and passionate group of people. I would say that we're talking about it nearly every day in the last couple of weeks, so lots going on there.
Thank you. Alexandra?
So I'm on three committees. I'm on the Calendar Committee, which has been especially grueling because we don't meet at all until next year. I am on the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, which has been interesting, and they just oversee how the bond money is spent. And then the committee I'm going to talk about today is the 1338 Committee. And this is the Educator Effectiveness or Evaluation Committee. I tried very hard to find out where exactly the 1338 comes from. It's from a bill, I think a House Bill 1338, that requires all school districts to have an educator evaluation effectiveness committee. And so basically, there are certain ways in which all of our educators are evaluated to ensure that they are meeting the needs of our students. Some of this is mandated by the state, that some of it has to be done in a very specific way that they're evaluated, and then each district is given some flexibility as far as how to evaluate the other part of it. And so basically, the purpose of this committee is to oversee that evaluation process and determine how we want to evaluate our portion of it. And so the goal is to provide guidance and monitoring of the evaluation system used by the district. And basically, the whole purpose of doing the evaluations is to encourage a collaborative approach for growth and development of the licensed personnel, focus on instructional practices that will improve learning for all students, use data to improve learning, be fair, consistent, achievable, and meet these requirements that are set forth by the Department of Education. And so I've only actually been to one meeting of that this year. We'll meet again next month. And it's been a good learning experience for me as a non-educator person, but really interesting. And they've did a, sort of made some innovative changes this year in allowing a lot of teachers to sort of determine their own method of evaluation to some degree. They could use standards such as test scores or iReady scores or things like that, or they could come up with their own student learning outcomes that would then have to be approved and see whether or not they met those. So it's been very, very interesting to be a part of, and I look forward to doing more next year.
Thank you. Stu?
All right. I'm our board's representative to the Colorado Association of School Board Legislative Committee. And I did something I've never done before. A week ago yesterday, I testified on behalf of the Thompson School District for a Colorado House of Representatives Subcommittee that was gathering input on a bill under consideration dealing with mitigating lead in drinking water in schools. So that was a first experience. And I shared with Dr. Schaefer that I was the only school board member in the state who actually testified on this bill. So I was pleased to be able to do that. The second committee I'll talk about is one that I really won't have to tell you too much because they're actually on the agenda tonight. I'm a member of the Audit Advisory Committee, and you'll find out what they do when that committee presents its information this evening. I'm also a member of the Master Planning Committee. And I want to close by giving a shout-out to the Berthitt community. By the way, for those of you who don't know, I represent Berthitt on the Thompson School Board. April 9th, I had the opportunity, along with Barb Cruz and Dr. Schaefer, to attend the Berthitt Bash. And I don't know how many of you have heard the financial results of that wonderful evening, but the event raised about $150,000 for Berthitt schools. And this is used to enhance education in such areas as technology, workplace readiness, experiential learning, SEL, which is social-emotional learning, and mental health activities and curriculum tools. In the years since 2009, when this group was formed and first began to meet and to raise money, the group has raised almost $2 million for Berthitt schools. So I'm proud to be Berthitt's representative on the school board for a whole lot of reasons, but particularly knowing what the community achieved on April 9th makes me even prouder.
I'm on the Joint Insurance Committee, which it wrapped up right after the board approved the new insurance program, and I'm also on DAC. So DAC and SAC, they're kind of parent-child, are great ways for the community, parents and any community member, to get involved in determining what's going to happen in the school district. It actually stands for District Accountability Advisory Committee. You have it at the school level, and I encourage every parent to get involved in those. And then at the district level is the DAC, which is the board I sit on. And it covers a lot of information. We decide things about how to get family school and community partner going, student learning and engagement. There's, this is an example of all of the things that they have put forth and made progress on, from things ranging from the attendance system, making it easier and better. And, you know, so that parents don't get a lot of calls from that. But it's also just a good way to learn how school districts operate. And the other great thing, when I was getting ready for this, is I discovered an answer to a question. Someone had called in last meeting. If you go to the district website and you put in DAC in the search bar, you'll pull up the link and you go to that page, and there's the entire history of DAC there. And they have all of these documents, all of the meeting minutes, and they have web links to all of the materials. So if you ever wonder or want to see what they've done for this year, last year, or even prior years, it's a great way to get kind of caught up and get informed and get familiar with what's happening. And the DAC is open to anyone. You can become, you can go there all the time, only when it's convenient or you've got free time. We do it virtual and in-person. And it's just, again, it's a great way for everyone to start getting involved in the school district and provide your opportunity to give your input, so.
Thank you. Pam, she's on virtual with us. Pam, do you have a report you want to give?
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, can you hear me all right? I'm a member of the Thompson Education Foundation, and I'm sure most of you know that the trailblazing Thompson Educator Appreciation Event was held on April 6th. Thank you to all the board members and all the educators who attended and were awarded. It's such a, just a fantastic event to honor our amazing educators. So thanks to everyone for their efforts there. Next, the scholarship committees associated with the Thompson Education Foundation are completing their choices for senior students and their scholarship. Their, the scholarships will be awarded at each high school's senior award event, which we're excited will be held in-person this year. Finally, a big fundraiser for the Thompson Education Foundation is the Loveland Classic 5K, 10K, Finally, a big fundraiser for the Thompson Education Foundation is the Loveland Classic 5K, 10K. And they also have a fun run for the kiddos. It is this Sunday, April 24th. You can sign up and get all the info you need at LovelandClassic.com or on the Thompson Education Foundation website. And then finally, if I could just take a very brief point of personal privilege, I would like to recognize a woman who passed away today. Her name was Jeanette Minnick. Many of you don't know Jeanette. Her two children went through our district, Namakwa, Walt Clark, Thompson Valley. She was a retired Air Force Colonel. She taught at the Air Force Academy. And she was one of the staunchest defenders of public education this district has ever seen. She worked tirelessly at each school. She was on every district committee you can be on except for school board. She decided not to run for school board. And Jeanette is an example of what can be done by our community members and our parents. And her efforts will not be forgotten and her positive impact is greatly appreciated. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Jeanette Minnick and her family and her son Jonathan, her daughter Venetia, who graduated from Thompson Valley High School. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. That's very thoughtful. All right, my reports. I am on the committee that is the Partners in Education with, for early childhood. And I'm not going to go into it tonight because Lamb is on our agenda and you'll find out a lot more from him. I'm also going to be joining, for some reason, we haven't had anybody on the CMAC, which is the same as the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, but it's the Mill Levy. And I'm going to be starting in September on that committee. So that's one I'm adding. So I've chosen as a report that I wanted to give is about an organization that's very impactful for our area, both in Fort Collins, Loveland, and Berthood. And it's called the Center for Family Outreach. And they are a local nonprofit that truly has a long and successful standing, standard of excellence for those students that are at risk, that have made a choice that wasn't an appropriate choice. And they started down a path that probably wasn't the best one for them. And it's a point where they can, oftentimes it involves maybe law or it involves a diversion. And this is a diversion for those kids. And I just wanted to bring this committee forward to all of us to really be aware and know that there's an office in Fort Collins, there's an office in Loveland. And it's really a resource for us that's really going to help a lot of the students that are needing a little bit more guidance and support for their parents. So it's not just for the kids, it's for the parents as well. And it offers so much. And so I just wanted to kind of give a shout out to that. It's only been in existence for about 22 years. I'm sure many of us who have had kids go through schools here might have wished it had been in place many years earlier. So just wanted to bring that forward. I went to a breakfast last week. Dawn went. Several people went from the district. And it's a very powerful organization and just really worth supporting. So just wanted to share that with you guys. All right. So now we move on to public participation. So Stu, would you be willing to read that for us, please?
Sure. Because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes and each individual will only be recognized once. If there's a large number of speakers, the board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topic related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concern them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in an executive session.
Thank you. So Dawn, who do we have on our comments tonight?
I believe we have one student first, Emerson Parker. And I'll ask you, when you come up to speak, that you go to one of the mics in the aisles because those are set up for public comment. And then because we don't have our fancy timer, I'm your fancy timer. And you'll have three minutes. I'll set my stopwatch. And then when you have about 30 seconds left, I'll just give a little motion. Does that make sense? Is that good? You know what you need to know, Emerson? Okay. Yes, please.
That probably will tip down, I would imagine. Usually they do. Yeah, there you go.
My name is Emerson and I'm a student at Lucille Irwin. I want to thank the school board and the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department for trying to make my school a nicer place. Kids say mean things every day. For example, the other day, our track coach was saying that no one from the other school had signed up for an event. Another kid said that's because they're gay and they said it in a bad way. It makes me so so mad that people would make jokes and say mean things about stuff like that. Also, some people are often making fun of other people. I want to stand up for them, but I never know what to say. I think you could find a way to teach us kids how to stand up for ourselves and other kids. I also think the teachers shouldn't ignore it when they hear kids say mean things. Some teachers say something, but not all of them all the time. Thank you for trying to make my school a nicer place to be where kids aren't saying mean things. Please keep finding ways to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have David Cash? Cook. Okay, David Cook.
David Cook here. This comes from a major magazine. Said it before, I'll just repeat it. According to the History Net, in 1999, America's high school education was number one in the world. By 2009, it dropped to 18th. Today, American education ranks near the bottom in almost every area of academic study among the world's developed nations. A lot of that is because of cultural engineering. The program the RTJ School District proposes recently is unfortunately a product of the international globalists provided by Marxist billionaires like George Soros and Klaus Schwaber, along with the far-left political party and their teachers' unions. Its true purpose is to propagandize and frustrate, if not browbeat, our children to destroy the American morals, ethics, and values they hold. This is not me saying this. It's the national educators, politicians, commentators, colonists throughout the country and much of the world, along with a parent recently in this school district who had their child sent to the principal's office because he used the wrong pronoun. And we know what, and you remember that because she was there. I was too. This program has caused violent protests in school board meetings throughout the country. State legislatures have passed and governors have signed bills restricting it from being taught in their states. School boards have been removed over this. It was soundly rejected here at the parents' meeting two weeks ago. What program am I speaking of that talked to our children, the misnamed Equal Education Opportunities Policy, with the implementation of demonstrating reduction in, quote, "bias, prejudice, and discrimination" and providing equity, an euphemism for current critical race theory, by the way, and throughout this district. The implementation of this in other districts led to the destruction of education, damage to the minds of vulnerable children. It has performed on and it has been used terms like disaggregated data by race, ethnicity, sex orientation, disability identifiers, just to name a few. Yes?
You're almost out of time.
Time's up?
Almost.
I couldn't hear you.
Yes, almost. You have 15 seconds.
This information will be available here for anybody that wants it. Cultural competencies are one of the things you want to eliminate bias, prejudice, and discrimination. The question, of course, is whose culture?
Time's up.
The secular humanists? The Christian? Buddhist?
Your time is up, sir.
Please wrap up. Thank you. Samantha Parker, you're up next.
Hi. My name is Sam Parker. I live in Loveland. I am a parent of three kids in TSD schools. The topic of my comment is to say thank you. I would like to say, to thank the school board and Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department for being leaders in our community. I am so thankful that the school board and Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department are taking the time to address issues in our district that are affecting our students. I know for a fact that many of you have spent time above and beyond what is expected of you in order to make our district better for each student. Please hear me say a sincere thank you. I fully support and implore the school district and Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department to continue to follow through with and implement the equity policy. This is crucial for our kids and our community. Thank you for your work to create a more welcoming district that all people are welcome into without fear of being looked at as less than others. I appreciate your lead in making changes to ensure that all families can receive written and verbal communication with the schools in the language they are fluent in. This is a win for our whole community as it helps to ensure the best success for their student, parent, and guardian involvement increases, student graduation rates and decreases the rates of discipline as caregivers are more involved in the student's learning experience. This can, this can be fostered through communication in that primary language. Thank you for your work to address the financial costs for students to be involved in sports, clubs, band, orchestra, and higher-level classes. I was floored when I learned that AP and IB classes test costs around $100 to take. Those are the classes that help students get their GPA above a 4.0. A grade point average, and a grade point average above 4.0 is how students graduate, top in their class, and earn the honor of being valedictorian or salutatorian. Those are each a ticket to college scholarships, often a full ride to college. This is such a hurdle that kids should not be up against. We cannot say it is, it is an even playing field. If, you must first be able to afford the advanced classes to get you in the running for college scholarships. Thank you for your work to level the playing field so that all students can be a part of the school community experiences. I learned that if the school does not have an instrument for you to rent for $40, and I'll note that I've heard their supply is very limited, you will have to rent one from a shop. And I called and it's between time?
I've got 30 seconds.
Okay. Between $180 to $750 for the year, depending on the instrument. I just want all of our kids to be able to, to experience the classes that they want to experience, have a level playing field. And I thank you and I thank the Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity Department for all the hard work you are doing to bring us up to that standard where all students have a chance equally in our district. So I thank you for that. It means a lot. And as my daughter said, thank you for making our schools better.
All right. Next up, we have John Kaufman.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk, for giving me the 30-second warning. I appreciate that. Yes, as I was introduced, my name is John Kaufman. I'm a taxpayer, community member here in, well, in Loveland, not in Berthood. I've been involved in the equity work in TSD for about a year. First as a citizen wondering about details and then as a member of the TSD Educational Equity Council. I found it challenging to get info from TSD officials over this time period. I asked the district officials what data indicated the problems that were being assigned to equity as a reason for some students' groups falling short of academic proficiency. Why? I heard nothing from either TSD leadership, including board members who I had contacted. I was directed to equity staff at TSD for further information, but heard nothing to my questions. I met with equity staff and asked for survey information that indicated opinions of staff, parents, and students on the matter of bias and insensitivity within the TSD community. I heard nothing from equity staff. In fact, I was told by staff that the survey info that I was looking for was confidential when I knew full well from work at other schools that that was not the case. Still, I heard nothing. I was able to be hand-selected to serve on the TSD Educational Equity Council as a member of the community. To my answers, to my specific questions, I still heard nothing. In fact, as one of the other members of the committee, of this committee has suggested, the process for this TSD TEEC committee seems to be an excellent example of intentional inefficiency. Okay. And the reason I say that is because things go very, very slow. We are fed information. We are not given an opportunity to give feedback. It's very frustrating. I went to the Equity Open House a few weeks back and still heard nothing about specifics about the program. Costs, academic performance since the implementation of the equity program, survey results, personal and curricular costs, professional development costs. There was one thing posted, as you probably know, to the, to your listening sessions. The leadership program training cost was $58,000. That was the one thing that was put up there. That's the only number I've seen. Mr. Jones is extremely competent. I'm sure he could give us this information, the community, on the cost of the equity program. So I'd like to know what data supports this.
That's time.
Oh, it's already 30 seconds?
That's time.
Oh, that is time?
Yeah.
D11 just sunsetted their, in Colorado Springs, their DEI program. I ask you to consider the same thing. Thank you very much.
I've got another name I'm having a hard time reading. I think it's Richard Bale?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Never done this before. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm from Loveland. I have a daughter in eighth grade in Loveland in LCS. So a couple of questions for you or a couple of issues that I have on my mind. One is about the budget. Really would appreciate some sort of visibility about where the budget's going, what, where our monies are being allocated, and I guess some discussion about why, right? Different things, the logic behind it. I'd love to have more time to review that and to discuss that here, I mean, with the board. I would love to understand the percent of money that's going to social programs versus educating on reading, writing, math, et cetera. I did not attend your Equity Open House, but I want to thank you for doing that, right? I also want to thank you for serving because I chickened out, right? I didn't, I'm not doing what you guys do. But I want to thank you for the open house. I was out of town. I had a lot of friends who did attend. I did talk to some friends yesterday who attended and I asked myself, what did you think? And to be honest with you, they're, of my friends, probably the most likely to have been convinced and want to go along with a lot of the program. Some of the things, but very few, they were in favor of. And they were adamantly opposed to many things. And I was shocked by their response, to be honest with you. I guess I would, I would encourage more of that kind of communication, but with more details and, and open up with more transparency with the community. As you know, there's a lot of concern about this equity program. Me personally, I am not opposed to what was shared here about equalization of, I guess, opportunity. I am very definitely opposed to equalization of outcome. That's, that's not my way. And again, I would, I would like to see more focus on, on the, on the basics, the fundamentals of learning, reading, writing, math, science, et cetera. And I'd like to see data, what's, of what's going on behind this equity program. Like what is the data driving this? And I think that would help the conversation with the public. I think it would be a good thing. So, thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. And I believe we have, that was it, right, Dawn? We have some call-ins, three call-ins. Okay.
6769, today I'm calling to recognize our teachers, staff, and students as well as agenda items 7.7 and 7.8. Q C does an incredible job of sharing his glory story, as it should. We need to celebrate the phenomenal teachers and staff that have given their everything to their students. Those that have shown up despite the challenges, despite the division, despite policies they may not agree with, despite the rapidly growing mental health crisis, despite the countless hours of work beyond the face-to-face time, despite getting the same bonus as someone who hasn't even finished their new higher paperwork, let alone spent the last two years having chairs thrown at them, meeting the needs of 20-plus different students with 15 different individualized plans and interventions, or preparing for the transition between online and in-person at the drop of a dime. We need to celebrate the teachers and staff that have been the only constant in many of these students' lives. We need to celebrate the students that have risen above it all. We need to celebrate the students who have worked tirelessly to get internships or scholarships amid the unpredictability. We need to celebrate the students who still showed up to learn even when a parent or guardian lost their job, when their teacher left, they switched schools, or when they were bullied. We need to celebrate the students that have found excitement in learning again and attempted to recover two years of losses. We need to celebrate the students that have and continue to be brave enough to ask the tough questions. We need to celebrate the parents that still patiently work to help the children who kick, hit, and bite them all day while someone down the hall is getting paid more to stick a Q-tip up a nose. We need to celebrate the nutrition staff who despite the quality and supply issues make sure no student is ever without food. We need to celebrate the custodial staff who have somehow kept up with absurd levels of sanitation while still knowing every student's name. We need to celebrate the nurses who can heal head bongs with magical ice packs and heal scrapes with only water, Band-Aid, and a smile. We need these celebrations. We need to recognize the boots-on-the-ground efforts that keep everything afloat. What we don't need are policies that place the burden of responsibility on those already overworked and underpaid. What we don't need are policies that seek to eliminate hyperfunding, ultimately stripping schools of tens of thousands of dollars used to enhance their unique learning environment and generations of community building. What we don't need are policies that use taxpayer dollars and our already limited staff to distribute medical marijuana and administer Narcan to students. What we don't need is to create an environment where drug overdoses are acceptable, but having a runny nose is not. What we don't need are students taking advantage of gender policies and having sex in school bathrooms. And yes, I have personally heard students discussing this at Thompson Valley High School. I'm asking that as you consider tonight's policies as well as those being reviewed for implementation in the coming years, that you truly consider the unintended consequences of those decisions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jill Wallace DeBrito, and I'm the parent of two TSD students in Loveland. I'm calling to show my appreciation and support for the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Department and all of the work that the board is putting to supporting the initiatives that it is trying to implement in the district. As the parent of two students of color, I would like to express my gratitude to the school board and Equity Diversity and Inclusion Department for taking the time to address the issues in our district that are affecting our students. I know that there's been a lot of pushback, and I just want to express and say a sincere thank you for your commitment to achieving an equitable environment for every student and family in our district and community. As a former language teacher in a public school with a lot of non-English speaking families, I'm also grateful for the effort to provide multilingual education and services, or education information and services for students and families whose primary language is not English. This makes a tremendous difference for parents, trans students, to be able to fully engage in their child's education and know that their voice is just as important and valuable as their English-speaking students and families who live in our community. I'm also grateful that my daughters are growing up in a district that is attempting to honor them as Latinas and provide space for them to show pride in their heritage and be part of a community that celebrates diversity, honors and elevates voices of color, and gives them a chance to experience the beauty and richness of a community that values equity, inclusiveness, and diversity. I'm also grateful the district is committed to hiring staff that's a better reflection of our student population. Seeing that currently 21% of our student population is Hispanic or Latino, that only represents 4% of our teachers' population. As a former teacher, I'm also grateful that we're trying to make practical ways to increase teacher retention, which I sincerely hope will include showing how valuable our educators are by increasing their salaries. There's so much more that you're doing that I can't fit in three minutes, but again, I just want to say thank you for your efforts and keep up the good work.
Hi, this is Anne Mann. I am a Thompson School District parent, and I can be reached at my email, nutrition simply at gmail dot com. I'm calling regarding the Mileage Club at Ponderosa Elementary. My three students have each participated at one time or another in this program and have so greatly benefited from it, not just physically as they've learned to run in a fun environment, but also socially and academically. When they've started their days here, running, and walking, laughing, and talking with friends, they have been so excited to start the school day, and they're just so much more ready for the academics later on in school. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate my father, the PD teacher there, for putting together this program, for the way that she runs with the students, the way she listens to them and talks to them, the way she celebrates the accomplishments, whether it's one mile or whether it's 100 miles. And to just express my appreciation to her and the other parents volunteers who are so dedicated to get up there each morning and make it possible for the Ponderosa students to start today in such a wholesome, healthy, happy way. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public participation. All right, we are ready to move on to action consent items. And these are items that we have presented to us at previous meetings or involve items that have been approved and need an adjustment of some fashion. So board members, if you have any item you want polled for further discussion, please let me know now. I will read off each item and then we'll vote on them as a group. 6.1 is approval of personnel, extra duty, coaching recommendations. 6.2, approval of expenditures over $50,000. 6.3, approval of the 2022-2023 organizational chart update. So I will take a motion to approve the action consent items as presented.
So moved.
Dawn?
Second.
And Alexandra. Dawn and Alexandra, thank you. Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd?
Aye.
Amy Doran?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Dawn Kirk?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin?
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we move on now to discussion items. And 7.1 is the Audit Advisory Committee update. And I see that we have Gordon, and I suspect we have some committee members here. So, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. It's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight three members from the Audit Advisory Committee who will provide an update and tell you more about the workings of the committee that was adopted or put in place by resolution of the board in 2018. So with no further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Sarah Winter, Anne Baker, and Galen Lyle, representing the Audit Advisory Committee this evening.
Good evening, board members, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer. My understanding is that you guys have a PowerPoint presentation in front of you. So I'm just going to address the first few slides, and then Anne will follow me. So again, thank you for the opportunity to represent the Audit Advisory Committee this meeting. The second slide, our purpose and charge. We're provided with the same annual comprehensive financial report of TSD that is available to anyone on the Thompson School District website. This document is designed to provide reasonable assurance that the board is doing what they're supposed to be doing. This document allows us as the Audit Advisory Committee to assist the Board of Education in fulfilling its financial oversight responsibilities. The auditor that has been selected, that was in place when we came on as advisory committee members, is Hinkle &amp; Company. They were selected because of their previously demonstrated competency with us and their punctuality in executing the audit when the appropriate data and direction had become available to them. We're in our third year of a five-year contract, which is renewable every year. One of the things that was brought to our attention when we met with the auditor recently was that the audit company is becoming something that is harder to find. So it sounds like we are thankful to have this competent of a company to work with. We reviewed the audit, and in doing so, we asked some questions that Anne will address later. But some of these questions include, how did we select the auditor? How did COVID federal funding create an additional layer of financial scrutiny also? So in reviewing the audit and meeting with the auditor, one of the things that I learned, because I have no financial background, was that we are looking for the opinion of the auditor. And the opinion of the auditor stated, in our opinion, based on our audit and the report of other auditors, the financial statements referred to in this document present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate discreetly presented component units, and remaining fund information of the Thompson School District. Sorry, I had to read that one, or it wouldn't have gone well. Essentially, they said, y'all did a good job. They gave us a clean or unmodified opinion, which is what we're looking for, and that is what we expect each year, and 2020, 21 was no exception. So. The annual report of how our duties have been discharged, which is the next kind of bullet point there, is what we're presenting tonight. Most of us started this committee after this report was done. But because of the federal funding reporting guidance being delayed, we are presenting this to you instead of the previous committee. Onto Slide 3, the membership. You see the members listed there. Each of us was nominated by the board member that served the area in which we lived in. And we serve a term of two fiscal years, which can be renewed up to a four-year maximum term. The most recent of us appointees had our first meeting in March, and we've had one more since then. The fourth slide. As far as the work done by the auditor so far mostly refers to the work that was done prior to being appointed to this board. All this work was done remotely. The board previously reviewed this document prior to it being submitted to the Colorado Department of Education on March 1st. And it was submitted in March instead of December due to a delay in receiving reporting guidance on some of the funding, the SRF funding that was related to COVID. An extension was applied for and granted. So when we submitted it on March 1st, it was still within the expected timeline. So that ends my presentation. Thank you for the opportunity, and Anne will follow me.
Good evening. So as Sarah had mentioned, in early March, we met for the first time to introduce committee members, discuss the role of the committee, and review the financial reports and financial structure of the district. Later in March, we met with Timothy Alpeltow with Hinkle &amp; Company, which is the independent audit firm for the district based in Inglewood. We reviewed the role of the auditor and the work that Hinkle &amp; Company conducted. Hinkle &amp; Company reported that the district's financial statements fairly presented the financial position of the district. They had an unmodified or clean opinion, which, as Sarah said, is what we're hoping for. Then we had a long discussion with the auditor that covered several topics. We talked about what would constitute an immaterial finding. We talked about how the board selected the auditor. We talked about how COVID funding kind of created a whole bunch of other problems, or financial scrutiny, I should say, not necessarily problems. And we also talked about the process the auditor used to request and verify data and how that changed during COVID. As Sarah mentioned, the financial report is available on the Thompson School District's website for anyone to look at, and also past reports are available on the website. And we're going to meet again in late spring to prepare for the next audit. Do you guys have any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, all of you. We appreciate your coming tonight. Anne, very thorough. I'm glad you joined the committee. Thank you. All right, 7.2, the Head Start Self-Assessment Report with Lam. Oh, excuse me. Hi, Dawn.
Hi. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Dawn Huckabee, Chief Academic Officer. Tonight is the first of a series of presentations that we will do related to our Head Start Grant. And so Lam Carroll, our Early Childhood Administrator, is here to share the self-assessment on the Head Start program. And we will then ask you to approve that self-assessment at your next meeting. And then, like I said, it will be almost like every week you'll be seeing Lam and I together.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I am Lam Carroll. I'm the Early Childhood Administrator, and I'm pleased to share with you the recommendations from our Policy Council and the results for our self-assessment for the upcoming school year. So on Slide 2, I've lifted, our self-assessment touches on all four focus areas, and I've lifted the outcomes that it addresses in our self-assessment. So if you look at Focus Area 1, does focus on student achievement. 2, inclusive and supportive cultures, and 2.1, 2.4. On Focus Area Number 3, human talent, 3.1. And Focus Area Number 4, 4.3, providing transparency. So the first question I want to answer is, what is the Head Start Self-Assessment? And this is an annual requirement where the Head Start Performance Standards dictate that we take a look at our program. So what we do is we take a look at 11 areas of our program, and in the spirit of continuous improvement, we look at what can we do better? So if you look on the slide, oh, shoot, I don't have it in front of me. I think it's Slide 4. Yeah, Slide 4. The big questions we want to answer is, has there been steady progress on objectives? Are family engagement activities and professional development efforts supporting positive child outcomes? And then, can we share what we learned with other programs? So for example, the self-assessment that I shared with you today that's been shared with other Head Start programs that uses their template to do things better. So, and I think the most important thing for us is that we use this opportunity to do any course corrections that we need to make to provide services for our families and our students. So what I'd like to start with are some strengths of our program. And the one thing I want to point out is that we recently went through a focus area audit, and that was done this last December. And the important thing to note about that is there's no findings for our program, which means we were all in compliance with all the Head Start Performance Standards, which is a huge plus for us because we work hard to accomplish that. I did lift a comment from our self-assessment from a family, or from the self-assessment auditor. It says, "The program engaged families in relationship building from the very first meeting. More than 90% of the parents expressed high satisfaction with the program." So that's a feather in our cap because we work really hard to do that. And along those lines with strengths, we also have strong partnerships with the Lions Club, the Philo Club, and the Early Childhood Council of Larimer County. And then, more importantly, we also have strong relationships with our families because of our home visitor program. I just want to say, over the last two and a half years, we've gotten much better at that because of COVID. So we started offering things- So we started offering things like porch visits, visits to the library, and virtual visits. So it's been a great way to connect with families in different ways. On the next slide, continuing with strengths, we've been able to transport kiddos that need transportation, and, you know, especially as we know transportation's been difficult. But we've been able to collaborate to make sure the kids that need transportation get it. We still get a lot of positive results, feedback from our parents about the amount of communication they get. And also with the, because of COVID, we've had more parents that have requested more help with therapy, and we've been able to connect parents with those therapies and access them. And then finally, I just have to give kudos to the staff because we have a highly qualified staff. They're all early childhood special educators, and, you know, there, there's been a huge lack of early childhood education workforce, and we've been able to maintain that quality. So I'm very proud of that. So on the next slide, what I want to share with you are some of the things that we'll be working on for the upcoming school year. So for health, with, I know I keep mentioning COVID, but as we are getting to more of a normal time, we want to make sure that we're in compliance with a lot of things that we have to do in terms of licensing. So the first thing we're going to work on is making sure that we have a clear notification process for families to update their documentation, particularly around Head Start. With nutritional services, we want to make sure that our auditing practices for tracking our meals and snacks in the early childhood program are efficient and accurate because we, again, going to the transparency, we want to be sure we're doing that. On the next slide, safe environments and transportation services, and I should have said this before, a lot of the things that we're doing for next year also build to the Focus Area Two audit that we will be going through next fall. So with the safe environments, we conducted an interior environment scan, and this year we'll conduct an outdoor environment scan to make sure that everything is safe for our students. For transportation, again, we want to make sure that we want to review and update transportation policy because as our, as we get back to more normalcy, we're seeing an influx of more students coming, we want to make sure we meet that need. On the next slide, exceptional student services, we want to make sure there are individualized education plans and are compliant, and, but they have challenging goals and objectives for each student. That's very important. In terms of our mental health services, as a part of our Tier One strategies, we're going to continue implementing the pyramid model of supports in the classroom. And just a quick explanation about pyramid, the pyramid model. I think most of you may be familiar with the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Model, and that's really a tiered model of looking at how to support our kids from Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. And our pyramid, our pyramid model is very similar to the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, but the difference is that it is developmentally appropriate for kids zero to five. So it's research, research-based strategies that address the needs of students zero to five. On our next slide of the Family Community Services, we want to continue working with the agencies in our community to meet the needs of our families. We want to continue tracking students who qualify for services under the McKinney-Vento Act. And then finally, collaborate with our Educational Stability Specialists to support families because one of our goals in Head Start is to maintain a 95% attendance rate for all of our students. In the education and early childhood development realm, we want to focus on our, continue focusing on our professional learning communities, and that also includes getting better at individual data collection, and also embedding the science of reading strategies into our instructional practice. I think you've heard a lot of that over the course of the year, and so we are aligned with the system of our school district. In terms of fiscal management, we had a new fiscal specialist join us, and so one of the focus areas of that is to make sure that she has the support and from the Head Start and from our program to make sure that she can do that job. And so that includes being familiar with the Office of Management and Budgetment, budget, regulations, and just being familiar with the Head Start Performance Standards. And then for our program design, we just want to make sure as we move into next year and beyond that, that our staffing model includes culturally responsive practices to ensure equity and access. And then finally, again, this is tied to COVID, we want to make sure that our Head Start enrollment is at capacity in September. So those are the recommendations from the Policy Council and from our staff, and those are the recommendations that I share with you this evening.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
So I have one question, even though this audit is for Head Start, Head Start is included, like there's the other groups within the early childhood education. So essentially, is it an audit of like the whole early childhood education program?
Yeah, because we just, we lump it all together as one.
Okay. And then my second question was, isn't specifically related to the audit, but do you do home visits on every kid?
Yes, we do.
How?
So Head Start students receive a home visit every month.
Oh, wow.
But we visit all our kiddos at the beginning and the end of the year, too.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nancy?
I had a question on the grandparents, or it says grandfamily alliance in Larimer. How is that, because honestly, that was the first time I'd heard of that program, and I Googled it and stuff. How are you promoting it, or are we promoting it within the district so that more grandparents are aware of?
Right, so we do promote it within our program because we do recognize that there are a lot of grandparents who are now second-time parents. And so once we know that, we try and connect them with that alliance. And so we provide that information, and I think the recommendation of sharing that with other, the greater community is a good one, and so we'll make sure we include that in any future communication that goes out.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just think there's a lot of opportunity there. I mean, seniors love grandkids, and grandkids love grandparents.
I agree.
Anyway, thank you.
Stu, did you have one?
Yeah, not actually a question, just a comment. Looking at the full report that you sent, as well as your presentation just now, there were two numbers that really jumped out at me. One is that 90% of Head Start parents are satisfied with the program. I think that's a huge and very positive number. And then the other, I think, was in the report and was not part of the slides, but you surveyed your teachers to see how satisfied they were with their positions in Head Start, and 95% said they were satisfied with their positions. And in this day and age in which we're living, where people are tired of their jobs, and they're, you know, quitting on the spot, and they're not taking new jobs, and, and whatever, to have a 95% employee satisfaction rate is terrific. So kudos to you and whoever else is responsible for that number.
Yeah, it's a, I have a great team that I work with, so thank you.
They do. Thank you, Lamb. You can see why I didn't really expound on my committee because I knew Lamb, and he could tell you way more than I could on what they do. But the committee is actually parents on the committee, along with some of the staff. And we meet on Mondays once a month, and it's called pie, so we always have some kind of pie at our meeting. So, thank you. Anybody else have questions? Awesome, thank you. And we'll see you in two weeks.
Next week. Or next two weeks.
Is that right? Two weeks? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, seven point three, summer school update. Don.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Tonight, we want to share with the board and the community where we are with our summer programming for the upcoming summer because, believe it or not, it's going to be here very, very soon. So we have Shannon Clark, our Director of Learning and, oh, no, I just did it, Curriculum Design, Curriculum and Learning Design, late night. She's here to share with you our plans in three different areas.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, I'm Shannon Clark, Director of Curriculum and Learning Design. And tonight, I will be giving you just an overview of three of the T S D summer programs being offered this year. So our summer programs are designed to highlight the characteristics found in our portrait of a T S D grad that you'll see on Slide Two. And then on Slide Three, these summer programs support all four focus areas in Strive 2025, specifically connecting to Focus Area One, 1.1, Focus Area Two, Inclusive and Supportive Culture, 2.1, Focus Area Three, Human Talent, 3.1, and Focus Area Four, Stewardship of Resources, 4.1. So very consistent. Tonight, we'll be looking at our plans for Camp Extreme, Credit Recovery, and Extended School Year. The focus for Camp Extreme continues to be for students to have an engaging, hands-on experience available to all K-8 students with a focus on science, technology, reading, engineering, arts, and math. See how that spells "stream"? And also have those SEL connections. Camp will run for 12 half-days, and support will be available for any students who may need it. Credit Recovery for any high school students will be housed at each high school this summer. This program, program, I'm sorry, will run for 16 half-days with flexibility available on an, and, on an as-needed basis. By having each school host their own students, the opportunity for connections and check-ins will be built in and readily available. And then Extended School Year is available for any student who qualifies based on their I E P goals, and E S Y will run during July for half-days. So we'll take just a quick look at last summer's enrollments in these three programs. So last summer, we had 930 K-8 students registered for Camp Extreme, which wasn't bad for our first, a first attempt. We had 75 high school students participate in Credit Recovery or Get Ahead Credit. There were 240 credits recovered and 22 credits completed for Get Ahead, and we had 153 students participate in Extended School Year. So we'll, we'll start tonight with a quick overview of our largest summer program, which is Camp Extreme. So we're really excited about the positive reception that there has been for year two of Camp Extreme. With just over, and the numbers are wrong on your slide because the slide was done last week, with just over 1,100 registrations and waiting lists continuing to accept names, we've made some amazing adjustments for this upcoming year, especially to our middle school program. This year, allowing students to have choice around week-long themes, so students can sign up for one, two, or three weeks of the program and have a really specific theme that's like a passion area for them. Our week-long options for middle school are blast-off hydro rockets, breaking news journalism, Lego robotics, Minecraft Design Challenge, stop-motion animation, and the science of cooking. So really excited, and our numbers for middle school are showing that there is huge interest in this, this adjusted approach. We've also really improved our units for our elementary students, creating aligned and engaging lessons around week-long themes. They still register for the three weeks, but then we have a week theme for each grade band. Some of these themes are Join the Jellyfish Jamboree for our kindergarten and first graders. For our second and third graders, one of the weeks is the New School Design Challenge. And one of the themes for our fourth and fifth graders is the science behind illusions and magic. So we heard feedback last year that these adjustments needed to be made, and we're really excited about the quality of our units for this upcoming summer. On the next slide, we will continue to offer transportation from select hubs throughout the district to our four locations. We're also continuing to collaborate with other organizations such as YMCA and Boys and Girls Club for families who may need a place for students in the afternoons. Unfortunately, we will not be able to provide breakfast and lunch this year due to changes in regulations that go into effect the last day of school. However, we will provide snacks for students during their time with us each day, and we're working with Nutrition Services on that. We are currently hiring for the large number of positions necessary for this program to run and continuing to ready our four locations. So next, we'll look at Credit Recovery. Based on the data and feedback from last year, Credit Recovery will be offered in-person at each of the five high schools. That was a very glaring data point that we saw last year was this success rate with students who participated in-person versus those who did it virtually. Each building will provide offerings based on the needs of their individual students, and each building will also hire their own staff so that students' connections and needs can best be addressed by the building. And finally, Extended School Year. Extended School Year is open to any student who qualifies based on I E P goals. We currently have between 90 and 100 students enrolled, with more coming in, and transportation will be provided. We're currently working on hiring for the positions needed to staff this program, and by only offering it at one location this summer, we're hopeful that this can help by not spreading staffing so thin. And offering it at a different time than Camp Extreme so students can engage in both opportunities. Are there any questions?
Questions? Uh huh. I see, okay.
I never know if I should raise my hand.
No, it's all right.
The Camp X, which first of all, my niece's son, it's, he would probably try to get her to move here just so he could do the Minecraft, but I was going through and clicking through all the links. Is there a cost for it? I couldn't find it anywhere.
It's no cost.
And it says you need a MasterCard when you try to register, but so I didn't understand that.
There is no cost. I, I don't know why it would have said that, but no, it is a, it's a free program.
Okay, maybe that's why, that's my, that was my confusion. So I think it's great, and I, I wish I could be part of Minecraft. Maybe I could understand what my great nephew's talking about.
We're hiring.
You can hire my great nephew.
Just throwing that out there. Stu?
All right. Shannon and I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. First of all, I'm really glad to see that SEL is part of all of the summer program offerings. We're going to need to continue to do that for probably a long time, so I'm glad that the, the programs involve that. Exciting to see the increase in program numbers, especially for Extreme. And I applaud you and your team for the changes that you've made based on the feedback that you received last year. All of us have been in situations where we offer feedback on whatever it happens to be, and then a change is never made, and we wonder, why did we offer the feedback? So you actually took that feedback and made changes on the basis of that. So my two questions, the first one is, can students still sign up for these three programs?
Kind of. So high schools are still registering students for Credit Recovery, and that's, is still open for, for any students that need that. E S Y is still except, you know, having students enroll again based on their I E P goals. And those, those meetings are happening currently that designate whether a student qualifies for E S Y or not. Camp Extreme has very, very limited availability left. We do have waiting lists, however, and so knowing that people's travel plans might change or, or something like that, so the, you can still register for a waitlist, and in certain sites and grade bands, there's still a little bit of availability.
All right. And my last question is with 1,100-plus students currently involved, I noticed that there was no Camp Extreme elementary site in either Berthard or South Loveland, that the furthest south site was Monroe Elementary, which is kind of in the middle of Loveland. And I was curious as to why you didn't choose a site that was further south to accommodate South Loveland and Berthard kids and parents?
So Walt Clark is actually open for K-8. So all four sites have elementary. Only two of the sites have middle school. So Walt Clark in Riverview have six, eight, as well as elementary, but all four of the sites actually have elementary. And we chose Walt Clark because the, the number, we went by last year's numbers because we had to choose sites before registration opened this year, and the registration has shown the same trend, which is the shown the same trend, which is the, the surrounding areas and the surrounding schools with, you know, Kerry Martin, BFK, Sarah Milner, Garfield. We have really our highest number of registrations in that area. And so Walt Clark is big enough to be able to really house the number of students that we would need with a K-8 opening.
All right. I didn't realize that Camp Extreme was going to be housed at Walt Clark and that is a south location, so I'm okay with that.
Any questions? Any questions down here?
I actually just wanted to say, I'm really excited to see that Camp, Camp Extreme and ESY don't overlap anymore because a month ago they did. And so I was really excited to see that they are, you, you can participate in both. Potentially if you can get a seat, if you were quick enough on the draw to get a seat in Camp Extreme. But I'm pleasantly surprised that we, or I'm really happy to know that we have such great programming and that people just showed up so quickly.
So quickly. It opened at midnight on a Monday and by, I think we had 800 registrations by the next day.
Wow, wow. But then again, I, I just heard all the cool things and I'm like, I could go do that for a week. So, you know, if I'm thinking that as an adult, I bet students think that even more.
Again, John, we're hiring.
Awesome. Thank you.
Amy, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that there is bus pickup to those, but at certain sites. So is there a site from Berthard that'll take them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Stu?
I'm sorry, would you repeat what you said?
Well, there's a site from Berthard so that there is busing for kids from here that want to go.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know that.
I mean, it's just a, a site pickup. So it might be like at Ivy or someplace that they'll pick them up and take them up to there.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks, I missed that.
Okay, Shannon, thank you for all your work. It looks fabulous.
It, it really is the group of people that are working on this who have done an amazing job.
Can we walk through during that time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Appreciate it. Seven point four. Continuity of Technical Operations Plan.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam President. I'm Matt Kuhn, the Chief Technology Officer. And I'm here to share some concerns and some plans to address those concerns. The plan is called the Continuity of Technical Operations Plan, but it's really just a big overall plan. There's lots of smaller plans under it. So the responsibility to secure our technical systems is shared by all. Like everybody has some responsibility to make sure they don't click on the wrong thing or share the wrong document and so forth. But to actually lead our defenses is a shared responsibility between myself and I'd like to introduce the Manager of Infrastructure Lonnie Mason. Wave your hand there. He and I together put these plans together to defend our technical systems. A general once said many years ago that no plan survives first contact with the enemy. And this plan is no different. As soon as an attack or, or emergency occurs, we have to then dial into the specifics of that attack. But this gives us a place to start. It saves time. It makes sure that we aren't making small decisions that we could have already have made. So it gets us faster and, and quicker and more efficient as we deal with the problem at hand. This presentation purposely leaves out some key details. That's because we don't want to give any intelligence to would-be hackers that would look up this presentation and use that information against us. So it is a little bit vague in nature since it's in the public domain. If you're following along with me on the Google slideshow that I shared with you, I'm now on slide two. So the possible threats, natural disasters, we've had a number of those in Thompson School District from floods to wildfires to pandemics. So they are certainly real dangers and they don't seem to be decreasing, they seem to be increasing lately. Major hardware failures. Large systems can just all of a sudden go down on us. A lightning strike can take out an entire system. There's lots of things that can happen where all of a sudden a very big system that we depend on fails. A major system failure, so more of like a hardware kind of thing, but there are ways for software to fail in a large way as well. Information security attacks, malware, viruses, ransomware, which is one of the most scary ones for us right now. Unauthorized access. That's where a hacker gets into a system that they have no business being in and accesses data that is secure data that they should not be accessing. And then TSD or third-party data breaches. This is where we are contracting usually with a outside vendor. Sometimes it is TSD data, but it happens more often outside than it does inside our networks. That's also one that's increasing and more difficult for us these days because we have so many vendors that it's kind of hard to keep track of which ones are fully as secure as we'd like them to be. The next slide on slide number three is a set of headlines. And the title of the slide is "The Danger Is Increasing." These are recent headlines. You can see the dates on them, many of are 2021 or even 2022. A lot of them are about ransomware. Other ones are about natural disasters. You can also see some costs on there. For example, Buffalo School District spent 10 million on ransomware response. So these are really scary when they happen because it's not only that your schools may have to shut down for a while, but the financing to repair the systems or get back on your feet can be quite onerous. We are covered by insurance under certain circumstances, so that, that money is not necessarily out of our pocket. But even that has its limitations and we can't always depend on that depending on what occurred. Next slide, slide number four, shortages of staff, services, or equipment. I, I could really could have broken this into three slides, but it's grouped together in shortages. What are we short of? Well, maybe we don't have enough staff because some staff are in the hospital and under a pandemic situation, for example, a couple of years ago, not everybody was in the office. And sometimes it's key staff that are gone. Like if network engineers are sick and we have a network failure, that's pretty tough on us. So if staff shortages happen, we have to prioritize. If services themselves are, are short, like we could have a situation where there are key services where there are very few players in that field. And if that system goes down, it's not easy to just switch to another one. For example, our financing and banking services. It's not easy to just quickly switch to something else if one of those all of a sudden failed. Or equipment, as I mentioned before, large equipment failures. So when those things happen, we have to prioritize by essential, high priority, or medium priority systems. It's not necessarily always about what's most important, although that does play into this prioritization. It's also about what has to come up first for something later to work. So some things have to be first because it wouldn't make any sense to jump to the other ones because it wouldn't work until you get the other ones working first. So on the next slide, it says prolonged disruptions of major systems. If we do have a situation where we cannot get our systems back online quickly enough, or if there's a situation where the service support center is affected, where most of our major technology is housed, we may have to move to a operations center at the administration building. And we're actually making improvements right now in this summer to make that more and more possible. So we would love to have the ability to just say, well, everything we do at SSC, we can also do at admin. We're not quite there to that level, but we can do many things and we're improving that capability. Next slide is slide number six, server damage. This does happen and it's happened recently, actually. We, we lost a storage server recently that we had to get replaced, a key part on it. And it's not something you can just go to Best Buy and, and pick up off the shelves. It's something you've got to order and have installed properly, so it can take some time. Many things can cause a server failure. Sometimes the server is just plain old and has been running 24/7 for years and it just wears out. Or other times, some kind of natural disaster situation happens, maybe a lightning strike where there's a power surge. Lots of different possibilities when a server goes down. When that happens, we may have to get assistance from a outside vendor. Sometimes we can't immediately get our own servers going, so we may have to outsource something. Next slide is number seven. This is where we start to talk about those priorities. So what are our essential systems? Well, first, we need Internet Service Provider service. That's a little bit of a challenge in our area because there is only one major provider and that's Comcast, although that is changing quickly. As Loveland Pulse continues to build out their infrastructure, they will become a major supplier. I don't call them a major service provider right now because they are not wired to all of our schools. So until that day comes, I can't really depend on them as a backup. But, but it's getting closer and closer to that. And they are already wired to our administration building. So if we were to go down, I could fail over to Loveland Pulse at our administration building if there was a major Comcast outage that lasted for a long time. Like I said, I can't do that to all our schools yet, but I could at least get administration up and running. Next is network communications between locations. So can our schools talk to the service support center? Can, can they talk to the administration building? Can they talk to the outside world? So those communications then are established after we know we have service to the outside provider. Number three is telephone provider connections. So can we call out and can people call in to us? And there are major numbers that we would focus on first. That's the admin building, safety and security, and the Sunrise Thompson Health Clinic. Those numbers would be the first ones we would try to get up and running. Now, when we move on to slide number eight, we have the high priority items. Now, the, the biggest difference between a central, high, and medium priority is that if things become short, we will at least try to get all of the essentials up. But we, if we, if we had only like one person running the show at SSC, that's probably all we could do. But if we had more staff and we have more systems, then we start to move on to the next block and say, okay, now let's try to get the high priority stuff up and going. High priority is our servers, our switches, and our emergency power. Emergency power is, we're already assuming with the essential ones that we have power. Because don't have power, we can't run any of our technology. So we do have backup power though, that runs it for an hour or two at a time. And those systems, we, we would get back online as number four under high priority. Those are when power is intermittent. So if the power's like kind of on, but then it turns off every so often because it's not very stable yet, then we need those backup systems to, so the servers don't get damaged when the power keeps flickering on and off. Financial systems for banking and budgeting. That's one you might say, well, wait a minute, why is that number five? Gordon is probably thinking, hey, how come you put me down to number five out of nine items? The reason for that is they don't work without number ones through four. So there's no point in trying to get the financial system and the banking systems up and running if I don't have network capabilities. So I've got to get the one through four going first. Then we can get to number five, financial systems and banking. Then we go to number six, human resources software. Then we go to the next slide where we go to the medium priority. And a lot of these are also things you would think we'd want immediately. But frankly, we could do without them for a couple of days if we had to, if the other things are working. Like if we can pay people, you know, that's really important, right? If I can't email you, I could live without that for a couple of days. But people getting paid or being able to pay others is super important. So that's why it's on high priority. Medium priority, we have email, chat, document sharing. Security systems, you might think, why is that number eight? That's not including alarms. Alarms is in the essential. But security systems is really just being able to get in and out of buildings and video cameras. And we can do without that for a few days if we had to because you can get in and out of buildings with the old-fashioned key and lock kind of thing, or, or literally somebody opening the door for you if they had to. So that is not at that essential. And then number nine, software as a service providers. All of those vendors that we have, there are connections that are secured into our network through our firewall that may have to be reestablished. So we would have to do without them for a few days if we couldn't get to all these things first. But then we'd eventually reestablish all those connections and make sure they're working. So those are the three buckets, essential, high, and medium, that we would work on depending on how many resources we had available and how much time we had. All right, the last slide is slide number 10, and it's our future information security projects. So this is like, what are we doing to improve the situation? Because the situation is getting more and more dangerous. It keeps me up at night, you know, whenever I hear somebody got a ransomware attack on them and I think that school district's not much different than ours, like Albuquerque, for example, had, had a, an attack on them. There have been attacks on Colorado school districts, ransomware attacks, that have largely affected our insurance rates. So, you know, what's the difference between that Color district and my, my district? Not all that different sometimes. So one of the things we're doing is something called ed-fi data interoperability. That one is really about making sure that we can secure our data better. So that's, that's about attacks where people are trying to get of our, get a hold of a private data that they shouldn't be getting hold of. Next one is improvements to purchasing and contracting. The better we vet software systems before we purchase them, so that we don't, you know, get involved with somebody who is not serious about their security on their, on their vendor side, the better. So we're very careful about purchasing. We have something called a DPA, which is a Data Privacy Addendum that we put on contracts that helps secure our data, data from the contractor's side. Next one is strengthening data privacy addendums, as I just mentioned. We're actually rewriting those addendums every so often to keep up with all the possibilities that we may have to put into the defenses from our vendor side. Enhancing backup systems. Now, if we get ransomware attacked, this will be highly critical. If you get ransomware attacked, basically what's happening is the attacker has encrypted all of your data and said, pay us money or you won't be able to get to it. Essentially, they have turned a defense into an offense. You know, encryption of data is usually a good thing. That's how we hide it from people that shouldn't be getting to it. But they've now figured out a way to hide it from ourselves by getting it into our systems and then encrypting it and not letting us know how to unencrypt it until we pay money. Obviously, paying a ransom is, is not always a great idea because then you encourage the attackers to do that again to others. So typically, the ransoms have not been paid by school districts. Also, they're usually ridiculous costs. So the insurance companies will often say, better to rebuild than to pay the ransom. Rebuild though means time. It can take a lot of time to rebuild all those databases. So if we have good backups, that decreases the amount of time it takes us to rebuild all our databases. So backup is really critical for us to do well. Next is information security audit and systems penetration testing. That's where we have outside parties try to come at us. And these are people that we trust, you know, they're not, they're not hackers per se. They're like good guy hackers, that, but they're going to use hacker techniques to get at us. And then they'll tell us how they did it. So they come at us and then they say, here's where we found a way in. And, you know, then we can patch those holes. So it's not just us in our own silo thinking we're safe. We have objective opinions. So we're, we're contracting some people to do that. And then lastly is an insurance problem. We are contacting different groups to see if we can solve this one. One is CALA. CALA is the case group that I'm a board director on that is the members of all the school district leadership that run technology departments like myself and my colleagues. But the problem we're facing is that there have been so many claims on insurance, not just Colorado's cooperative, but nationwide, that it's very hard to find an insurer who will insure information security attacks. There, the, the market is collapsing. And that's not my words, that's their words, that I got in an email from them, meaning that they're not able to fund it at the level they need to, to pay the claims. So it's becoming very expensive and difficult to even find. We do have insurance till July, but in July, we will be looking to re-up and they may not actually let us. We may have to find a different insurance carrier to fund our information security insurance. So like I said, it's not just my problem, it's every district's problem. So we are trying to team up and see if we can solve that problem before it becomes bigger than it is. That is the end of my presentation. What questions can I ask, answer for you?
Questions? Starting down here? No?
I have one.
Yeah, I was just squirting my way down this time instead of starting always. Okay, anybody else? All right. Your show.
Such a long wait.
Yeah, I know. It's a big table.
It just has to do with what you just wrapped up with. So if our policy expires or we have to renew in July, what's our current policy cost and what could potentially be the new one if we have to go somewhere to some other company?
I don't have the exact number of our current cost. That's handled by Human Resources, so I could get back to you on that and tell you what, it's wrapped up within our larger policy, so we would have to kind of dig in there to get what is just the cost for this particular rider. We could do that though. We can get back to you on that. It's unknown what the, the cost could be in July. We're just getting warnings, warnings right now that they don't know if they'll be able to insure us for this particular area. be able to insure us for this particular area. And if they are, the cost is going to go up. That's the only warning we've received right now. They're shopping it as best they can, I think. Uh, so, you know, in July, or hopefully before that, we'll find out if they can still even offer the insurance and what that cost would be. Like I said, the backup is to go with CALA and start talking about teaming up in other ways with other districts. I mean, we have to be insured in some way. It, it's just too dangerous to, to just kinda like go it alone and, and hope for the best. It's not, it's not if we're going to be attacked, it's when we're going to be attacked. And so, uh, we don't want that Buffalo cost, like you saw that headline there, ten million dollars hitting our bottom line. So we'll figure something out, but I, I just can't tell you what that cost is gonna be.
No, I understand, thank you. And, um, great presentation. This stuff is so critical. If anyone's ever been through it, um, the worst time you need a backup is when you don't have a backup.
Very true.
Thank you, Matt. Awesome information, little frightening.
A little frightening, yes.
I guess we kinda needed that wake-up call to let us know that it's, it's something we have to be totally aware of, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Seven point five, negotiations update, Dr. Severs. Is there anybody else here? Andy is. All right.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer of this amazing destination district.
Thank you.
Uh, with me, I have Andy Crisman, who is our TA President, and we're here to present together. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide all of you with an update on negotiations. Our presentation will cover Strive 2025, which focuses, the focus area of human talent. Three point one, ensure recruitment and retention of high-quality staff. Ensure continuous improvement and growth mindset. Ensure the working environment reflects a positive culture and climate. First, before I get into the interest-based model, I decided to kinda talk about that briefly. I, I first want to have hu- huge kudos for Susan Sparks, who's our facilitator. She's been with the district for 26 years. So she's been working with us for 26 years, which is pretty amazing. The success we've had through negotiations over the years, she's definitely a part of it. So the interest-based model has six parts to it. It's the story, explains the issue or problem in details, and answers the question what. Interest is the motivation to solve the problem and answers why. Options, brainstorm, ensure in all ideas without elaboration and discussion, it answers how. Then we get into criteria. These are the what to look for when a decision is made. Is it legal? Is it timely? Does it fit in the mission of the district? Then, then we get into solution and agreement. The best solution is a strong design that includes interest, identifies standards, and incorporates options. Implementation is the last part. Develop an action plan with detailed agreement, answers who, what, when, and where. So tonight's presentation will talk about negotiations met on Tuesday, April 12th. We are meeting again next Tuesday, April 26th, from eight to four o'clock in the boardroom, and all of you are invited to attend. We'll discuss the story and interest, options and criteria for compensation items, and discuss story and interest for posting of professional staff vacancies, and review the notes from April 12th. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Andy Crisman, which will get into the notes from our April 12th meeting.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I'm Andy Crisman, uh, President of the Thompson Education Association. I do want to acknowledge Kayla Steele, who is actually our Vice President in Charge of Negotiations, who's in the crowd this evening. And there are a number of other educators here from Berthold High School and across the district, um, who have, uh, stayed the long haul to be here, and I really appreciate their attendance and, uh...
And we appreciate it, too.
We do have a quick, uh, we did start with an overview of, uh, our norms, our rules for engagement, how we're gonna treat each other and that sort of thing, uh, and a review of the interest-based process. And that's outlined in your, in your notes. We had some communication from our two plus two oversight, which is our planning committee for negotiations regarding what we decided to bring forward this year. It being a, a middle of our contract, we don't bring all of our issues forward for reopening, but we had some very specific things, um, compensation, and that we really wanted to focus on compensation this year, but also to talk about, um, a tweak to our hiring process and our pub job posting process, because we had to adjust that to meet, uh, current, uh, regulations and statute. Um, Gordon Jones came and gave us an environmental scan in terms of what, um, the financial picture is district-wide. And while you can read a lot of the details, the big, the big pieces are enrollments likely gonna remain flat next year. They average for funded pupil count over five years, and we're losing a higher number that's dropping off the five-year average. And though we're flat, we're probably gonna lose about 200 students. The two versions of the school finance, the, the long bill, we could either be getting six and a half new million dollars, million new dollars, or we could be getting something like 12 million new dollars, and we don't know yet. So, um, kind of in the middle there. And then, uh, Gordon also talked about, um, the state of the mill levy overrides in the district and the various inflationary pressures, um, from property insurance and para and fuel costs and out-of-district, um, placements for our students with disabilities, um, that are kind of, uh, budgetary pressures that, that they're looking at for the, for the year. Then we got into our compensation story, and, um, I think of the negotiations process as kinda this big funnel. We start with everything and we kind of gradually use that as context to find a, a more focused solution. And so while story is, story, as you can read, is fairly atomized, there are a few themes there, um, that, uh, some, lots of story around the sal- structure of the salary schedule, um, lots of story about the cost of living, uh, some story about the teacher shortage generally and specifically, and some of its effects on what's going on. And, um, also some different things about, uh, the realities of costs and what, what's going on. There's some others in there, but those are kinda the big themes. The interests, um, you know, what do we want to accomplish as a result of this? What do we wanna see? And there's some, some fairly powerful ones there. Um, teachers being part of the fabric of our amazing community, um, being 100% staff the first day of school is a huge interest, figuring out how to make sure we structure things to be able to do that. Um, being competitive across the teacher's career, um, and, and being able to effectively develop those attract are ones I would just highlight, but there's lots of good ones in there. And then criteria, we go, I don't know why options are after criteria. But we did went through options next. And, um, I wanna say that the number of options we have here are at least in part a result of a collaboration between the association and the district called the Budget Study Team. We spent about four or five meetings ahead of negotiations in what I'm calling a salary schedule sandbox. We said, what if we changed this part of the salary schedule? How much would it cost? What if we adjusted the cells here? What if we did this? What if we adopted this theory, uh, a set of priorities for our salary schedule? How much would that cost? And so the level of understanding of what adjusting the salary schedule cost would cost and what it does in terms of reflecting our values was really high, I thought, amongst all of the stakeholders there. And so the number of, um, um, options you see are really a reflection of some of that pre-work we did before we got to the table together. So I'm really pleased by that. Then we began to sort through, we didn't sort through the options yet, but we started naming some of the criteria we wanna filter those options through, um, when we start designing our negotiated solutions. And I'll let Bill, of course, um, flesh out anything he wants to flesh out about that, and also talk about the rest of our meeting.
And then the last part of our process was talking about posted positions. So that was one of the related items. We have two related items on top of compensation, and it was posting positions, and the other one was M, MOU cleanup. So at our next meeting, we'll talk more about compensation and then split, split up into smaller groups to talk about the MOU cleanup with the posting positions. So that concludes our presentation, and Andy is here to answer any questions that the board may have. And we can also, you know, use Kayla there, too. We'd hate for her just to be in the audience and not participating as well.
Questions? No questions? How about that?
Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right. Seven point six, this is the first reading of policies, IHAM, deletion of policy, IHAMB, and new regulation, IHAM dash R, health and family life slash sex, Dawn.
Thank you.
That's such a mouthful.
It, it really is, yes, absolutely.
I never know if I said the letters in the right order or not.
I call these the policies related to comprehensive health.
Yeah.
Makes it a little bit...
That makes sense.
Less, less of a mouthful, but, um, these are connected to our inclusive and supportive culture, as well as our student achievement and ensuring our students know and understand the, um, our comprehensive health, uh, standards. We do have, uh, the policies that Barb mentioned. Um, policy IHM is our health education policy, and it was last revised in 2009. We have regulation IHAM dash R, which is our health education parent exclusion request, and it was last revised in 2009. And then we also have policy IHAMB, which is family life sex education, and it was revised in 2009. And as presented to the board at the study session a few weeks ago, um, the only difference between these two policies is two paragraphs. And it's two paragraphs related specifically to the family life and sexual health that I'm not sure why the board at the time in 2009 created the two separate policies, but they did. And so staff is recommending that at this point, we would integrate those two policies into one. That's what most districts have, is a single policy that addresses both health and, uh, family life and sex education. So our process has been, our staff has reviewed, excuse me, reviewed and analyzed our, these current policies and regulations, and related to the comprehensive health, we looked at, uh, policies from other districts, and we've also used the, uh, Colorado Association of School Boards' model policy and that regulation. Uh, this, earlier this winter, we, actually it was March, which feels like winter a long time ago, um, we held listening sessions and feedback, um, from an online input form about the, uh, what's in the Colorado academic standards for comprehensive health. And so from that, some of the, the questions and the concerns are related to some of the changes that we are proposing. And, um, we have asked our legal counsel to look at what we're proposing for you, and they have approved the recommendations. So the key changes in policy IHM, this would be what we would want to be the anchor policy now, and we would recommend that we change that code to be IHAM slash IHAMB, which now shows that that policy has been integrated with a previous policy. Uh, we would incorporate the content from IHAMB, again, that was two paragraphs, that's unique to the requirements for family life and sex education. We have, within this policy, clarified some exemption options for health education. We've added language in this policy that, um, requires the provision of an alternate assessment or an activity if a student is exempted from a portion of the health curriculum. And then we deleted a number of items that are, we found to be included in either the new regulation, IHAMR, which is about the exemption process, or it will, it lives in policy IJOB, which is guest speakers and programs, IMB, teaching about controversial issues, or IMBB, exemption from required instruction. And we'll be bringing those policies and some updates to them, to you at your first meeting in May. We just didn't wanna bring it all together at once. Um, and then in the regulation, uh, we would recommend making that change to be a regulations that mirrors the policy name, so changing the regulation to IHM slash IHAMB dash R upon approval of the, the proposed consolidation of the other two. In this, we have inserted the process for requesting an exemption for content in comprehensive health standards. Um, the current regulation has a letter that is outdated, and so the district will create a, a, a consistent letter that would be updated annually that we will share with all of our schools, and so that they would have that and not have it be part of the regulation. It would just become part of our protocol and practice. Uh, we have deleted, in this case, the outdated list of health topics. It was from 2009, um, recommending that those health topics as health, um, when students are in health classes, they get the list of the topics, and those are then communicated to families. Um, and then the last thing would be, with the merging of the two policies, would be for you at your next meeting to delete policy IHAMB, because now it has been incorporated into the combined policy. Are there any questions?
Any other questions? No, looks so, which is amazing, but no? Okay. Of course, having had that work-study session, that helped in the study session. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
So then the next one we're mov- moving on to is, um, seven point seven. This is the first reading policy, JLCDB, and exhibits JLCDB E1, JLCDB E2, medical marijuana.
Thank you. So I'm here again.
Yes.
Um, tonight, we bring forward to you revisions to a required policy, um, by the state. And we've had a policy in place since, um, I believe, 2000, I don't have my glasses, uh, 2000...
Seventeen?
Seventeen. So it was when, when some of the first medical marijuana policies came into play and we had requirements for school districts. Um, and so as we look at, um, a, a new state law was passed in 2021, was signed, uh, May of 2021, and it's Senate Bill 21 dash 056. Um, what this act requires, um, in the, the old policy and the old statute, uh, districts had the, actually principals had the discretion, um, of whether or not to permit the storage, the possession, and administration of cannabis-based medicine on school grounds by school personnel. And so what this, this new statute does is it requires school boards to implement policies allowing for the storage, possession, and administration of cannabis, cannabis-based medicine by school personnel. Uh, it further, uh, so it, it requires us to have the policy. In the policy, then it needs to state that school personnel may volunteer to possess, administrate, administer, or assist in administration of cannabis-based medicine and protects those who do not from retaliation. And this is administration to students. Uh, school personnel are not required to administer medical marijuana and cannot be retaliated against or refusing to do so. The policy, or, or the law also requires that our, our school personnel who does administer the medical marijuana must do so according to a plan, um, that is been, um, for administration from a student's recommending health provider. And so in the policy, it lists who those recommended health providers may be, including the dosage, the timing, and the delivery route, um, instructions. It imposes a duty on our school principals to create a written treatment plan for the administration of, of these, uh, products, and also on school boards to adopt the policies, as I said before. The policy and the act, uh, provide civil and criminal immunity to school personnel who act in good faith in administering, um, cannabis-based medicine to students in school, requires schools to treat cannabis-based medicine recommendations like prescriptions. Uh, does not apply to pro- um, private or non-public schools. So this act does not, which obviously your board policies would not, um, go again on, on them anyway. And if a, a school event is happening or occurring on, uh, federal land, then the federal government, um, rules that prohibit administration of medical marijuana would be in place. So that's, that's some distinction there. So in order for us to comply with current state law, uh, the policy that you have before you and the revisions meet that, um, meet that test, and it also has been approved by our legal counsel. In addition, um, we have two exhibits. Um, one is whether, one is for if a school personnel is volunteering, it's the plan that would be documented. The other one is if a student had a, another qualified adult who would come into the school setting and administer. So we have those two exhibits. And so we'd be deleting our current exhibit to have then two, um, E1 and E2. And, um, we would be, be bringing forward this to you at your next board meeting for approval. Are there any questions?
Are there questions? Alexandra?
So I have a question that I realized when I was reading it, I had this question, and I didn't think of it again until now, so I'm sorry I didn't ask you previously. But under the policy, there's the paragraph about the school nurses, um, that it talks about, that they also are not obligated and may choose to volunteer. But the last sentence in that paragraph, I don't totally understand what it means, um, where it says volunteers will not be authorized under a school nurse's license to carry, administer, direct, or assist in the administration of the permissible form of medical marijuana to the qualified. to the qualified student. So I don't know if you can explain that to me now or if you need to get back to me, but that's something I just.
Actually, we have our nurse supervisor, Barb Hartman, in the audience, and Barb can answer that question.
Okay.
Or say what we need to do to get back to you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. I'm Barb Hartman, nursing supervisor, and to answer your question.
We can't, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. To answer your question, I, the reason that is in there is to show a distinction between prescription medications that we administer and the procedures we use to be able to administer medication to unlicensed people are able to administer medication under the nursing license under administering medications to students for normal prescription medications as opposed to medical marijuana, which does not follow that pattern.
Does that make sense to you? So, so I guess the difference, the distinction is that a school nurse would have to sign up as an actual volunteer and sign the form rather than being able to just give insulin or whatever.
That is correct.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you. Now I get it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice you could join us.
Thank you. Again, another study session win.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's the value of our taking time to ask those really. All right. Seven point eight, the first reading of policy JLCD, administration of medication. Oh, hi, Todd.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. I'm not taking on a new career.
I was going to say, do you need a hat?
Nope, 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 just fine. So tonight, we have a slight modification to policy JLCD, talking about Narcan. So I'm going to invite Joe Vajinski, our safety and security manager, up to review this with you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. And I'm actually also going to invite our apartment back up here, our nursing supervisor, should the board have any specific, specific medical questions about this policy change. This is part of our STRIve 2025 Plan, which is 2.4, to ensure all of our facilities are welcoming, safe, inclusive, and meet the needs of students, staff, and the community. Kind of an overview of my presentation is we're going to go over just a brief data slide, and then we're going to talk about kind of the purpose of the implementation of the policy, and then the purpose of it and whatever questions you may have. On your next slide, you'll see a, a chart. I don't know if the members of the community can see it, but as you'll see, there's a pretty good rise of drug-related overdose deaths. And this is a national figure, but we also know that it is impacting our state and our community as well. So this is kind of the purpose and the reason why I'm up here today, is to talk about how we're going to address this. So the purpose of the policy change is to allow staff besides just nurses to carry Narcan inside of our schools. So specifically, my security staff, nurses, and then members of administration. Those are just three areas that we've highlighted, but this could be extended to athletic events, supervisors, things like that to help support our community. Should the board approve the policy, we would implement a training program that is housed within TSD. Currently, we're working on a partnership potentially, once again, if the board should approve, with Northern Colorado Health Alliance, which has partnered with some other districts out on the eastern side of the state, and CDPHE, which has a bulk fund of Narcan specifically identified in this purpose by statute. The other thing we really want to talk about with this policy would be community access. So it would be similar to the community access we have for our AEDs in our schools. So some, we'll get creative and we'll figure out a way, but that way be similar to that process. Should they see something going on, they would have access to that medication if they needed it. On the next slide, you will see the device that we are, we would propose bringing into the school district. They have a wide variety. One of them includes needles, which I would prefer to just use a navel spray. It's, it's safer, and it's just easy to train on and easy to implement. So there's a picture of the device for you. And then, as you can see here, this is the proposed language for the policy change for JLCD. This policy change is actually directly from CASB. So it is, has been looked over by our legal counsel and has been implemented by a few other districts across the state. The link there at the bottom of the your slide has where it would fit in on our policy specifically, and it has been redlined for your convenience should you need to read that. And that is the end of my presentation. Should the board have any questions, I, myself or Barb Hartman can answer them.
Questions? Okay. Alexandra starts with you, and then we'll.
Oh, you can go, Stu.
Go ahead, Alexandra.
Okay. So my question is, you talk about a stock supply. What do you think of that stock number being? Just because Barb, as I'm sure you're aware, the, you know, Narcan lasts for three to five minutes, and oftentimes it takes many, many doses before emergency personnel arrive. And so I would want to make sure that there is enough available to keep a kid alive if repeated doses are needed.
That's a number that through our partnership with these different varying agencies, we would ask for their recommendation. I know our SROs currently carry two with them, and that's just their standard process. I can't speak to it. But I would hope that we would have a numerous amount, but I don't know that number right now. I would need to get a recommendation from the experts to make sure that, but whatever recommendation that is, I would make sure that was housed in our schools.
Yeah, I would say two is nowhere near enough.
I can't speak for them, so.
All right. Joe and Barb, you can tell this question is coming from someone who's not from the medical community. Is this a nasal spray? Is this an injection? What is this?
It is a nasal spray.
Okay.
And so when Joe mentioned syringes, there is a generic brand where you use a syringe to draw up the medication so that you can give it nasally. And so it's not actually an injection.
Okay.
It's a nasal spray.
Thank you.
You, you mentioned that we were, you were going to try to figure out how to space these in places like the AEDs so it could be accessed by anyone? My question is, and I have no idea how to identify somebody's having an opiate problem. So how, is there a risk or anything with just anybody being able to get the Narcan and apply it, and somebody's really not having an opiate? I, I, again, I don't know anything about medical.
The training that would be included with expected users would include how to identify a need to administer it, what you're looking for, so an assessment piece. But for the public, they're really, what they're telling us is there really is no risk so, to administering it. So I could see potentially like 911 directing someone to use it potentially.
I was just going to add, like, is that, I mean, similar to what happens with an AED, which is that I haven't went through first aid training in like 10 years? And they have the instructions right on the inside that says, hey, if you've never done this, this is how to not screw it up? Is it like idiot-proof in case there's someone like me who needs it?
That's a great idea. I know our AEDs currently have directions on them, both verbally, the machine actually talks to you, and then there's some instructions as well that are attached to it. We would make sure that those were things that were part of the program. And other, when I spoke briefly with one of the eight organizations that's, we're working, should the board approve, they have spoken about that, and also ensuring that it is done in multiple languages as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Amy, anything?
Pam, Pam has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam, I forgot to look. Pam.
That's all right, I can just put them down.
I know you can. And we thankfully have Lauralee.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can.
All right. I might have missed a detail or two, but I wanted to, first of all, say, I think this is one of the most important things the district can do to protect our students. And I'm, I'm really proud of us for being at the forefront of this. Do we know how many other school districts are working on this same project?
I'm not aware of a specific number. However, I have been in communications with some members of Boulder County School District who have this as part of their policy, but I can't speak to the full number of the state.
That's fine. I, I just, I'm really excited we're moving forward with this. It's, it's incredibly important to, to save lives. Thank you for all your work on this. I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Pam.
So I just pulled up a news article from February of this year. It says Boulder Valley School District is just one of four school districts in, in Colorado that have or are utilizing this right now in their school. So, you know, there's 170-plus districts. It's just that we would be one of the first kind of pioneers.
Yes. Okay, great. All right. Any other comments?
You know, I actually had one. I, I appreciate seeing that we didn't just identify it for students, although, you know, that's our first thought, right? We, we have the public that come to our sporting events and to all these other things. And given the prevalence of, of the need for this, it is similar to the AED where you just might need it. And so I, I think one of the things that has people feeling itchy about this is the idea that it may be used for students. And I understand why that would feel yucky. And at the same time, we have staff of all ages. We have people, and what we know about opioid addiction is that people who are taking it as prescribed are having these reactions. And so it's unlike anything that, what we think of, right? It's not the problem that other drugs are, in that this is just people doing what they're supposed to be doing, their doctor tells them to do it, and then all of a sudden they're at their kid's sporting event, and they need this. And so I'm also grateful because we are definitely responsible for doing the best we can in that way. And I just want to address the stigma that's associated with this, being an early adopter. I think it's important for us to talk about that as well. So, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this comes back to us again in two weeks. Okay, cool. All right. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Seven point nine, April 2022 Board Study Session Update. So it's a little preview of what we have, right, Don? So are you doing part of it?
I, I'm going to do it all in less than 60 seconds.
Okay, perfect.
That's, that's the challenge I've been given. So I just want to update the board and the public on the topics for tomorrow's study session. We will be looking at policies ADA and ADAB, which are related to district goals. A number of board members, I guess three of the seven of you may remember back in February and March of 2021, we looked at these policies. We started to go down a path of making adjustments, and then we tabled it because of a number of other things that were happening in the district. So we're bringing those back to this board to take a look at. We will also have some time with the board around the Conrad Ball consolidation and the design and where, where, where we are with that. And then Dr. Schaefer and you all will be working through and continuing your book study on high-impact school boards, reviewing the board community engagement sessions, kind of debriefing those, talking about next steps, and then talk about the CASB-led study session that you will have in June. So with that, that's, again, just a preview, and more details tomorrow.
Perfect. The whole first topic, the goals and district goal, kind of fall right into where we're going with the rest of the agenda. So it's perfect. All right. There is one written report, and it's the Families Partnering in Education, which Lamb shared with you about, so it's there. I'm sure you all browse them closely. Future agenda items. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring forward? If so, if you think about something that tomorrow might be a good time for us at our study session. Otherwise, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, all of you that stuck around.